Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the pandemic, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via live stream on Facebook and YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the Commissioner's website. The public is able to participate and provide public comment via phone. To all participating in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Here.
Commissioner Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Luciano?
Here.
Commissioner Sebo?
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Here.
Madam Clerk, I think we skipped Commissioner Mercado.
Oh. Commissioner Mercado. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, let's please pause for a moment of silence for all of those who have passed due to COVID and to those who lost their lives in that fire in New York. Thank you. I have before from the clerk that this meeting is meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
In that case, we'll move to public comment. Okay, Madam Clerk. Today's meeting is a conference slash board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had an opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, we'll have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk?
If you are calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce callers so they can state their comment or question. Be reminded, you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have on your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. Please note, you will have the opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session on non-agenda items. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer, please begin our public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers waiting to speak at this time.
Thank you. Mr. President, we also have no emails or written correspondence for public comment for agenda items only at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we will go out of order and move to Resolution 21, which is from the Office of Management and Budget for the '22 Temporary Capital Budget. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, Mr. President. Congress of the Board. Our Treasurer, Mr. Mohammed, is here to address this item.
Good evening, Hassan Mohammed, the County Treasurer. Resolution 21 is for the '22 Temporary Capital Budget, which is the capital plan for the year '22. In order to introduce any ordinances, we have to pass the Temporary Capital Budget. And all the information will be reflected in the adopted budget once we adopt it in the spring. And I'm here for any questions.
Mr. Paul Vecchio?
I'm sorry, I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
Hassan, this capital budget is aligned with the concept that we're authorizing $20 million a year? And this capital budget stays within that self-imposed authorization?
Yes, it is. We have, there is $6 million for the county college, and this will not include any new debt. This will be reapropriation of existing funds, so there is no any extra liabilities. So if you take this out of the Temporary Capital Budget, we will be within the $20 million, what we have every year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. President, I have a quick question to make sure I'm understanding the resolution right.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. The authorization is for the debt authorization line item, right, only?
Hassan Mohammed, County Treasurer. The resolution only to approve the plan for the whole year, for '2022, to allow us to introduce ordinances? And the authorization will be authorization to that issue?
The $19 million, right?
Okay. This will be, we will introduce ordinances, will be issuing $19 million of fourth of debt, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But the resolution itself does not authorize any debt yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pumares. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to move to ordinances. Do we have any ordinances or resolutions on introduction and first reading?
Mr. President, we have two.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read ordinance number one into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, our Treasurer Hassan Mohammed will handle items, ordinances one and two.
Good evening, Hassan Mohammed, County Treasurer. Ordinance number one is for bond ordinance providing for various capital improvement, appropriating 16.250, so horizon of 50,470,000 of bonds and notes. The ordinance has three sections: improvement to various county buildings and facilities, and improvement to roads and bridges, and improvement to parks. And I'm here for any questions.
Mr. Paul Vecchio?
Yes, Mr. President, to sort of piggyback on what Commissioner Cooper said, having just approved the plan for the Temporary Capital Budget for this year, we're now moving into a bond ordinance for the various capital improvements as Mr. Mohammed just explained.
Mr. McInerney?
The same thing, that's fine. It's consistent with what we just did in the previous resolution.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Luciano to introduce ordinance number one. Roll call, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. President, just before I take the roll call, may I make the statement that please put yourself on mute? Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
You're muted, sir.
My apologies, yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to ordinance number two, and we'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Mohammed?
Good evening, Hassan Mohammed, County Treasurer. Ordinance number two is to provide for the acquisition of senior buses for senior transportation and for vehicles for the Sheriff's Department and the Prosecutor Office, not including any passenger cars, it's non-passenger cars. And this is an amount of $2,250,000, or horizon that's $2,140,000.
Mr. Paul Vecchio?
No comments, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney? Mr. McInerney?
I don't have any comment on this.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Johnson to introduce ordinance number two. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any ordinance or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Do we have any ordinance or resolutions on second reading and public hearing?
Mr. President, we have one. And that is ordinance number O-2021-00015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to ordinance number O-2021-00015 and read it into the record at a later time. I hereby declare the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00015 open. If there's any member of the public who emailed comments for or against this ordinance, we will read the comments into the record and respond to you in writing, or if there are any callers in the queue. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance, Madam Clerk?
We have no one in the queue.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Information Officer, there's no one in the queue waiting to speak on any ordinances.
Thank you. Let the record reflect there are no comments. No comments were received, and no callers are waiting. Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. Paul Vecchio?
Yes, just as a reminder, this is an update to the way the county will pay its vendors through electronic.
Would you repeat that? You kind of faded out there.
Sure. This just updates the administrative code to give the county more ways to pay its vendors. And I believe this is by electronic fund transfer.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Graham to close the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00015. They have the same mover and second to approve the ordinance.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to resolutions one through six, which are advise and consent. Resolution one through three are nominations to the Board of Appeals, and resolutions four, five, and six are reappointments to the same board, and we'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you noted, we have some nominations to the board and some renominations. Our first nomination is Robert O'Connor, and I believe he's on the line to speak to the board and answer your questions. Mr. O'Connor?
Hello? My name is Mr. O'Connor.
Tell a little bit about your background.
I'm a licensed master plumber in a state of New Jersey. I'm a code official in the city of Orange. I'm a co-construction official, building inspector. I've worked for over forty years in the plumbing and mechanical contracting business, and I've been a plumbing inspector for over twenty-five years. I live in the borough Glen Ridge in Essex County. I'm married. I have two children, one in college and one still thirteen, and I'm excited about serving on the board.
And I should add, Mr. President, we're excited that Mr. O'Connor has decided and agreed to serve to great addition to the board.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, if you are not speaking, please put your mics on mute.
Mr. Jackson, next?
Mr. President, our next nominee is Mr. Anthony Grinch. Equally excited about him joining the board. He will be coming on as our fire protection subcode official on the board, and I believe Mr. Grinch is on the line to answer your questions. Mr. Grinch?
Yes, hello, my name is Anthony Grinch. It's a pleasure to be honored and a pleasure to be asked to be on the Board of Appeals. Been working for the township of South Orange for thirty years, former fire chief in Caldwell for twelve years, volunteer fire department for forty years. It's just an honor and pleasure. I'm looking forward to be part of this board, and thank you very much.
Thank you for volunteering. We appreciate it.
And finally, Mr. Our final nominee, Mr. President, is Jean-Louis Charles for the board, and Charles will be our fire building construction code official. Mr. Charles, you are on for the board. And again, thank you for agreeing to serve. We're honored to nominate you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jean Louis Charles. I'm the construction official in Essex, and working for the city of Essex for more than thirty years, thirty-three years of experience. I am humbled to have been selected to join this board. It is an honor. I look forward to work here ahead, to help the board to improve the quality of life of the great city, citizen of this Essex County. I intend to utilize my expertise to help the county of Essex. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, sir.
Again.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. And as you know, too, Mr. President, we have two reappointments, Mr. Dietrolio and also Mr. McLaughlin as reappointments to the Construction Board of Appeals. Sorry, one more, sorry. Sir, Mr. Arthur as well.
Those are the three reappointments.
Yes. Mr. Dietrolio, Mr. McLaughlin, and Mr. Arthur.
Let's start with you, Mr. Paul Vecchio. Any questions or comments?
No questions, Mr. President.
McInerney?
Sorry, no question.
Commissioners?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to compliment the administration for putting before us three new wonderful people and three excellent reappointments. We are very, very fortunate that we have so many wonderful people living in our county who are willing to put forth their time to do all the help they can for Essex County. So thank you to all of them, to all six. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Graham to take resolutions one through six as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution seven through twenty, which are temporary emergency appropriations from various state and local agencies, and please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be going through items seven through twenty. Item seven is from the New Jersey Department of Human Services in the amount of eleven million seven hundred ninety thousand and eleven dollars. These are funds used to assist the welfare recipients in finding and retaining full-time employment with no county match. Item eight is from the city of Newark in the amount of six hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars to provide monthly subsidized rental assistance, prevention services, and case management. Again, no county match. Item eight, Department of Human Services, in the amount of three million four hundred twenty thousand seven hundred dollars. This funding is to assist families and individuals who do not qualify for emergency assistance through the Family Assistance Benefits or SSI. There's no match required for this program as well. Item ten, New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, three hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. This is funding wide range of services for impoverished and low-income residents of Bloomfield, East Orange, Orange, Irvington, Montclair, and Belleville. Just as a note, Newark receives its own funding under this program, separate funding, and the activities and services include employment counseling, career training, housing assistance, youth services, and other forms of advocacy. Again, and this one is no match as well. Item eleven, New Jersey Department of Human Services, one million six hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. This is to organize, implement, and monitor programs or services for Essex County residents with alcohol and drug-related issues. Item twelve, New Jersey Department of Human Services, in the amount of eighty thousand nineteen dollars. This is to provide services to physically disabled residents of Essex County in ages eighteen through eighteen through seventy. No county match. Item thirteen is New Jersey Department of State for local art grants programs. This is, again, no match, and it's the amount of three hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Item fourteen, New Jersey Department of State as well, for local history grant programs in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. No match required for this program. Item fifteen is a community development block program that's going to support roadway reconstruction of South Orange Avenue from Speedway to Stivenson Avenue in Newark. Sixteen, New Jersey Department of Transportation. This is for streetscape improvements, Phase Two in Irvington, Irvington Avenue, streetscape improvements, in the amount of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents. Item seventeen, a New Jersey Office of the Attorney General. This is funding that's going to the prosecutor in the amount of one million forty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars. This is through the Voca Grant Program, victim with Office of Victim Witness Advocacy. This covers salary and fringe benefits, and there's a twenty-five percent match for this program in the amount of two hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars that we need by salary and benefits. Item eighteen, Office of the Attorney General, again, going to the prosecutor in the amount of fifty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents, and these funds are used to operate a program for individuals who are opioid-dependent and are subject to criminal arrest, and hopefully will arrange treatment in lieu of incarceration. There's no match for this program. Item nineteen, Office of the Attorney General, again, going to funding, going to the prosecutor, one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred nine dollars for the VAWA Grant Violence Against Women Act to enhance our services to protect people from domestic violence and other crimes against women. There is a thirty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-dollar match. It's one third of the amount of the grant for this program. Item twenty, New Jersey Office of Insurance Fraud Prosecutor, in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, again, going to our prosecutor's office, and this fund is to augment and enhance our investigation and prosecution of persons commuting and committing fringe fraud, especially medical insurance fraud and auto arson-related fraud. This covers the salary and fringe benefits for one assistant prosecutor and one investigator, and there's no match for this program. Those are the twenty temporary inserts, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paul Vecchio?
Yes, Mr. President, these insertions of funds from various state local agencies are considered temporary emergency appropriations, not necessarily because there was an emergency, but because at this time of the year, the county has not yet adopted its twenty-twenty-two budget, and we're operating on a temporary budget. So that's the only difference for the rest of the year of the budget considerations, and these all require two-thirds of the charge.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
Mr. Jackson, in resolution nineteen, is that an in-kind match or a cash match?
Salary and benefits.
Okay.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take resolutions seven through twenty as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number twenty-two, which is from the Office of the County Administrator, and please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker will handle this item.
Good evening, President and Commissioners. Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management for the County of Essex. We come before you seeking authorization for the emergency purchase to extend the medical malpractice liability policy with I Am Sure Specialty Insurance. This is a policy that is covering the county's various vaccination sites and covering the doctors and nurses that work there.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Vecchio?
Yes, Mr. Walker, this is a renewal of the policy we have, correct?
Yes, sir, it is. Yes, sir. It's a flat renewal premium at twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McInerney?
Are we using doctors and hospital staff from our hospital with regard to vaccinations, or are we hiring other people?
It is for, this policy is covering folks that are outside of our own direct employees. So where we use our doctors, they're covered under the county's blanket medical malpractice policy, but this is covering the doctors and nurses who are not direct employees of the county.
Are we using any of our doctors and nurses for the vaccination process?
I believe some, but not all.
They would not be under this policy?
No, they would be covered under our standard medical malpractice policy. This is one specifically for the nurses and doctors who would not, who were not granted coverage under our corporate policy.
And the coverage of our existing policies for existing doctors and nurses would cover them to provide the services, the vaccination services outside of the normal operations of the county hospital?
Yes, that was approved by our county.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson? So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution twenty-three, which is from the Office of the County Council. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. County Council Gassion will handle this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. Item number twenty-three is very similar to the approval that our office requests every year for a qualified list of outside counsel. This is a similar list, only it is specific to the area of workers' compensation. We have requested, for the first time in several years, that an RFQ be put out requesting qualified attorneys licensed in the state of New Jersey who focus their practice on workers' compensation law, respond to our RFQ. If they are deemed to be qualified, they are placed on this list, and we are now seeking the board's approval of this list so that going forward through calendar year 2022, when the need arises for workers' compensation council, we will be able to select off of this list. This need has arisen because there has been an increase in the number of workers' compensation claims that the county is seeing, especially in the area of COVID-related workers' compensation claims.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Vecchio?
Mr. President, this method of getting a stable, if you will, of pre-approved attorneys has been a very efficient way to both comply with local public contracts law and get attorneys who've been pre-approved into cases very quickly. So I think it makes sense to do this for workers' compensation as well.
Mr. McInerney?
I have no questions on this.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Vice President Pumarres and a second from Commissioner Sebel. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
President not voting.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Still moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 24, which is from the Department of Citizen Services Juvenile Detention Center. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Director Warden Barcliffe, and I believe Mr. Conjillo will handle this item. Mr. Barcliffe.
Good evening, everyone. I am Warden Barcliffe from the Essex County Juvenile Detention Center. The Essex County Juvenile Detention Center is a 249-bed facility located at 80 Durie Street in North New Jersey. Line item number 24 is a contract award for a two-year extension for the operation of food services to GD Correctional Services. We have a representative from GD Correctional Services on the line to answer any potential questions.
Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
I have no questions on this, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Vice President Pamares. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Still moved. Mr. President, I hear background noise. I'm going to ask again if all people who are not speaking, please put yourself on mute.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 25, which is from the Division of Community Action. We'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ramos will handle this item.
Good evening, this is Maria Ramos, Division of Community Action. This item is to request an approval to enter into 21 contract for the social services for the homeless program and one contract for the intensive skate management program for the 2022 year. On November 16, the Division of Community Action issued a request for proposal for the competitive contract 21263. It was issued for our local nonprofit organizations. We received 26 responses. 21 of those were accepted, evaluated based on their services and experience. Any questions?
Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions on this.
Mr. McInerney.
These are obviously all Essex County sub recipients?
Yes, I mean, I invite some of the vendors to be on the call. I don't know if they were able to call in.
No, I'm just asking whether or not they're all Essex County entities, that's all.
Yes, they all are.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, just checking.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you. So this is just a one-year grant to these entities?
Yes, the request for proposal is two years, but they, the contracts are renewed every year.
So they have one year to spend this money or two years?
One year, and then we'll receive another amount for the second year.
All right, thank you.
The amount listed here is just for 2022.
Just for 2022?
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Still moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 26 and 27, which are from the Division of the Hospital Center. And we'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Director DelGaudio will handle these two items.
Good evening, Frank DelGaudio, Director, Essex County Hospital Center. Resolution Number 26 is our annual approval of our financial and management plan. So basically what this is, is we need a resolution from the commissioners to continue the operation of the Essex County Hospital Center for the year 2022. This is an annual resolution we ask for your support on. This then, the approval and resolution is forwarded to the state of New Jersey with other documents for approval from the Division of Mental Health in order for us to continue the operation of the Hospital Center. Resolution Number 27, I'm sorry, do you want me to continue? With the next, with 27?
Yes.
Okay, 27 is a contract with clinical services management. This was advertised as a competitive contract. This was the sole responsive responsible bidder on this three-year, three-year contract in the amount of $185,250. It's for, they come onsite monthly and they do mock audits and surveys of patient records, policies, procedures, and all of our documentation, staff interviews, and assistance with all compliance activities relative to our joint commission accreditation. We are in a survey year, so the services are ramped up for 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
Thanks, Mr. President. Frank, on the contract on Number 27, is that a new vendor or somebody you've used before, Hospital Center?
Through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director, Essex County Hospital Center. We've been using this vendor for the past three years. And they were the sole bidder when we let this out back in 2018.
Mr. McInerney.
The certification process, Frank, that is, this is just the board allowing, giving their approval to send in the necessary paperwork to get the certification, correct?
That's correct.
You just need board approval to make the submission of the application?
Oh, part, part, that's one document. They require a resolution from the governing body. They require a, a copy of the approved budget. They require a copy of our workforce plan with all of our staff and what positions they're in and the headcounts. And then they also require a layout of our facility, drawings, and occupancy by unit.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Frank.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion for Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Gill to take Resolutions 26 and 27 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Still moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 28, which is from the Division of Community Health. And we will read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Ms. Grazia will handle this item.
Good evening, Colesse Brazia, Program Monitor, Division of Community Health, Office of Addiction Services. I'm speaking to Resolution Number 28, Acceptance and Approval of Chapter 51 Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services Grant and Provider Contract. This is a yearly contract. The amount allocated per calendar year 2022 to implement drug and alcohol treatment programs is $1,054,000. The funds allocated for provider contracts will be awarded under a five-year competitive contract. And funding for each year of the competitive contract will be determined on an annual basis. These contracts will provide substance abuse treatment services to individuals in Essex County that are struggling with addiction and without health insurance. So I'm here to answer any questions the commissioners may have. And I do have two of our providers on the phone as well as their specific questions about the treatment programs that are funded. I have Steve Margiotis, who is the Executive Director of Main Street Counseling, and also Nilda Rodriguez, who's the Program Director of Real House.
Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions on this.
Mr. McInerney.
Is, all this money is expended within the county? There's no sub grants?
Right, all of them.
It's just sub grants, correct?
Excuse me?
I'm saying, is this money expended to other sub recipients within the county?
No.
Okay, this is all this, all of this grant money is spent within the county?
Yeah.
Who is it you have on the phone with you?
Sure, I have Steve Margiotis. He's the Executive Director of Main Street Counseling. He provides some of our prevention programs. And Nilda Rodriguez, who is the Program Director of Real House. And that's one of the halfway houses, the females that we fund.
So, so that was my point, though. So there are other, other entities outside of the county that provide services?
Okay, um, yeah, the county doesn't provide direct services. So we issued the competitive contract request for proposal and are funding the agencies through that process.
Well, I'm aware of Mr. Margiotis, so I don't have any questions. I just wanted to establish that this money is expended outside of the county operations.
Yeah, just, I think Mr. Agger may have been just misunderstood your question, Frank. It's largely, largely through sub grants.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a portion of it, $632,000, which we have for administrative purposes. And the balance, the million, oh, 54, goes to the sub recipients.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Sebo.
I'd like to just commend this program because it goes on every single year. And I think it's a tremendous asset for the county to have this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Still moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 29 through 38, which are from the Department of Public Works. We will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Antonio, David Antonio will handle these items. Mr. Antonio.
Good evening, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 29 is to authorize us a medal of an application and grant agreement for the 2022 Annual Transportation Program to the NJDOT in the amount of $9,801,233. This year, we're looking to improve three intersections along Richwood Avenue in Glen Ridge. That would be Richwood at Bay, Richwood of Washington, Richwood at Bellble. In addition, 30 miles of road resurfacing across 11 different workway sections. For example, South Orange Avenue in Newark, Franklin Avenue in Nutley and Bellble, Eisenhower Parkway in Roseland and Livingston, Coit Street in Irvington, Lyons Avenue in Newark, Kingsland Street in Nutley, Washington Street in West Orange and Orange, High Street, also West Orange and Orange, Franklin Avenue in Nutley, and Bellble Avenue in Glen Ridge. Item Number 30 provides for the federal funding in the amount of $798,997.30 to undertake the construction of the Irvington Avenue Streetscape Improvements Phase Two along Irvington Avenue from Hillcrest Avenue in Maplewood to Florence Street in Irvington. This will extend the already constructed improvements of Phase One from its termination at Hillcrest into Irvington into Florence Street. Item Number 31 is an approval to submit a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for two minor culverts. The two culverts in question are Bloomfield Avenue over the Pine Brook-Tributary in West Caldwell and the Beaufort Avenue culvert over the Tributary Bridge to the Pacific River in Livingston. Item Number 32, again, is an approval to submit a grant application to the Department of Transportation. This particular one is to improve the Thomas Boulevard Bridge in Orange. Item Number 33, again, another authorization to submit a grant application to the DOT. This one is to improve three culverts. One is the Condit Court Culvert over Fordkins Brook in Roseland. The second one is the Canoe Lane Culvert over the Canoe Brook in Roseland. And the third one would be the Annan Road Culvert over the Kane Brook in West Caldwell. Item Number 34 is a professional services agreement to Comito Associates to provide architectural, engineering, design services for the new facility that will be constructed at 346 and 360 University Avenue. This will be a two, sorry, a 12-month contract. It will not exceed $4,600,000. It is funded with grant money. And the proposal was selected because it was a high scoring of the seven responses to the RFP received. Laurie Shabrazzi is on the phone to discuss the firm and their anticipated scope of work. Laurie, are you on the phone tonight?
Yes, I am, David. Thank you. So my name is Laurie Shabrazzi. I'm a Vice President of Architecture at Comito Associates Architects. I've been a member of the firm for almost 30 years. I'm sure you're aware, we're located local here in Newark, 23 Warren Street, where we've been since 1990. We have designed many We have designed many county projects. We're looking forward to working with the county again. Many of our employees are local graduates of the local universities and county residents. The building that is before us tonight is about a 200,000-square-foot building, eight stories with various services, 22 courtrooms, holding cells, conference rooms, utility spaces. I don't know if anyone has any questions for me.
Mr. Paul Vecchio.
Doc, Commissioner.
I don't have any questions. Commissioner Sebo.
Thank you. Comito Associates has done wonderful work for Essex County. I mean, I can't even count how many beautiful structures we have because of them, and I'm so happy that they're going to do this because I'm sure that this new facility will be another great project for Essex County. So thank you to Comito Associates.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're excited about this project. Very excited.
It will be wonderful.
Mr. Paul Vecchio, did you have anything?
I did not.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney.
Is there, is there a dollar amount associated with this at this point in time before the approval?
There's, there's not a budget that I'm aware of. I don't know if any other department has put a budget before anyone.
On, on these, on the projects that were just, were just discussed, correct? There hasn't been a budget yet on those projects, is that correct?
Are you speaking, Frank, of the building, or are you, are you talking of the other things that we did for the 20 million? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, what I was thinking of was.
Mr. McInerney.
The Public Works Division of Engineering approval of annual transportation program. Am I looking at the right thing?
34. Mr. President, I know you wanted to say something.
I, I just want you to be reminded to put your name on the record.
Pardon me, Mr. President. Robert Jackson County Administrator. No, we're on the, the item dealing with the building, the new, the new Family Justice Court Building, Frank.
All right, I'm off target on that.
34. Okay.
Because I didn't see a dollar amount on the last one. Is, is, is there, is there a dollar amount on that? Does that?
The annual, I'm not sure if I said it, but the annual paving program that we do is about $9 million. If that's what you're referring to.
Is that? Which, which?
That's through the gas, I'm Robert Jackson County Administrator. That's through for the, for the gas tax. The money that we get through the, the gas tax way, the $9 million or so.
Is that the D O T money?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that, that 9 million, is that, that, has that been consistent? I guess my, my, my question eventually is going to get to whether or not that mine, 9 million was consistent with the prior year. I know we have gotten additional monies because of the increase in the gas tax. Is that amount that we're getting this year consistent with last year?
Robert Jackson County Administrator, through you, Mr. President, yes, it's about the same amount as we got last time, because in years prior, before the adjustment to the tax, it was in the four to $5 million range.
Yes.
Double, yeah, the last couple of years, it's been over nine, I think last year was maybe 9.4 or something like that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you. For item number 34, I don't think that quite occurred. What, what is that? Is that a new project? What is item number, Resolution 34 for?
I can just listen in here, pardon me.
Please, if you're not speaking, we do your conversation.
Mr. Jackson.
Robert Jackson County Administrator. The project is the construction near our existing buildings, 321-3, the new DFAB buildings, a project next to that of approximately 200,000 square feet, where the, the folks who are currently at the Gibraltar slash Lenz Building are going to move from that building over to this new building for a, a, a brand-new family justice center.
This is what, gonna be, is it courthouse, the new courthouses space?
Yes, yes, it'll be 20, 22 courthouses and about 200,000 square feet.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I may. I'm sorry, Mr. President, Courtney Garcia, I will just add, the board approved in December the purchase of the property where this new building is going to sit. This was the parking lot that we had previously leased, that we now own. We closed on that property on the end of December. So just for a frame of reference, this is where this new property is going to be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Gill to take 29 through 38 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Y- yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions.
Mr. President, if I may, I don't think, I don't think Mr. Antonio did. I'm sorry, Robert Jackson County Administrator. Mr. President, I don't think Mr. Antonio did Items 35 through 38. I don't think, I know he did not cover those, so we can, you want to go through those?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go back.
Okay.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 35 is a contract award for professional services to provide architectural and building services for county golf course projects to Stephen K. Golf Course Architects. 12-month contract, and that to exceed $285,000. The Stephen K. proposal was the lowest cost and highest score we've both received, and Mr. Stephen K. is on the phone to introduce himself and the work he will be performing. Mr. K.
Yes, hello, Commissioners. I'm sorry if I start coughing a little bit. I'm just actually getting over COVID. I don't wish it on my worst enemy. Anyway, I have done work for the county's golf courses for about 12 years now. Two of the big projects, I was a sub to Mot McDonald. One small project I did on my own, and then another more project I did. So I've done all the work. I just did the, that major renovation at Hendricks Field. I did not feel like, excuse me, Francis Byrne needed a full-time art, an engineer to be on the job. So I have a small engineering firm for any services I might need as my sub, but I felt it would save the county a lot of money if I went after it directly. I am a golf course, I'm a licensed landscape architect. I limit my practice to just golf. I've been doing golf for over 30 years. I also teach in the Rutgers Turf Program, where they learn how to be super tenants. And again, I'm the one that did the parking lot and the putting green and all that at Wequayak, and I'm the one who just did with Mot McDonald the, the big restoration at Hendricks Field. And which, this project that Francis Byrne won't be quite as complicated. That's why I don't think we need a big-time engineering firm. Did you all hear that?
We did. Thank you.
Okay, good. Good, thank you.
Item Number 36, I'm sorry, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 36 is a contract award to Air Systems to provide for the replacement of various HVAC units throughout the Hall of Records complex. This bid was the sole bid received. It will not exceed $782,978. It will be a 150-day agreement. Air Systems, Mr. Vasco Cordero has joined us this evening to talk about his company and their experience for the county. Vasco?
Good evening to all. My name's Vasco Cordero with Air Systems. I've been an employee of Air Systems for over 24 years. As per Resolution 36, we're proposing to replace the HVAC units throughout the Hall of Records. We're a union shop. We employ multiple trades, try to keep everybody busy. We have done multiple installations for the county, service, maintenance, repairs, work at multiple buildings, Gibraltar, Leroy Smith, the Juvenile Detention Center, Hall of Records. We just completed the job last at University Avenue with the renovations there. We've done multiple years of work with the county, so look forward to, you know, continuing our relationship and doing this project for you guys. If you have any questions, please let me know.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 37, contract award to Magic Touch Construction, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to provide miscellaneous plumbing services. This will be a one-year contract. From date of award, it will not exceed $525,751.50. Magic Touch's bid was the lowest of the three received. Item Number 38 will be a contract award to Liberty Mechanical Contractors, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for electrical and mechanical services for the bridge, Clay and Jackson Street Bridges, which are jointly owned between the County of Passaic and Hudson County, an award of 730, I'm sorry, an award of This will be a 730-day agreement. However, the County of Passaic is co-owner of the bridge with Hudson County, so we're only responsible 50%, which will be $107,075. Thank you.
All right, let's try this again. Mr. McInerney, any further questions?
I don't have any questions on, on these contracts, the ones that are approved, were the lowest responsible bidder.
Mr. Paul Vecchio.
No, I just have questions.
Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? So I guess we'll take the, the vote over. So I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Gill to take 29 through 38 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano. Commissioner Luciano absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 39 through 44. And 98, however, 98 has been withdrawn by the administration. So we're just looking at 39 through 44. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zates will handle these items.
Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks. Number 39 is a contract award to VIP Special Services to provide maintenance, cleaning, and waxing of statues in the amount not to exceed $51,060. This is for all the statues, I should say, statues that are outside throughout all of Essex County. It includes all statues within the park system, as well as the statues around the Essex County Government Complex. Number 40 is a contract award to Fire and Security Technologies. It's a 24-month extension not to exceed $74,220. It's for the monitoring, fire, security, and elevator alarms. This is simply a contract to monitor the various alarms throughout the various park facilities in the park system. Number 41 is a contract award to Eastern Armor Services. 24-month option not to exceed $138,384 to provide armored car services. This is for transportation of cash from the various revenue-generating facilities in Essex County Parks to the bank. Obviously includes the zoo, the arena, the environmental center, permits, and all of the golf courses. Number 42 is a contract award to Golf Now to provide a point-of-sale and identification database. Contract extension, 24-month option, not to exceed $74,000. This is for the point-of-sale system over at our three golf courses. The monthly amount is $2,250, and we have our part, our golf course director, Tim Chris, on the line to go over the contract in more detail. Tim?
Hi, Tim Chris, Director of Golf Course Operations. The Golf Now contract handles all of our point-of-sale system, our golf IDs, our tee time system, golf marketing program, revenue reporting system, and we've, we've had this company for three years. This is part one of a, or it's a one-year extension, and then it'll be up again next year. So we had a three-year contract and then two one-year extensions if we felt the, the contract was worthy. And as far as I'm concerned, they've done a great job. We just actually received new computers for all our golf shops to operate, and if there's any questions.
Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks, just a, a point of clarification. We opted to go with the full 24-month extension rather than two one-year options, so it's the full 24 months. Moving along, Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks. Number 43 is approval of grants for the 2022 Local Arts Program. Earlier this evening, $391,365 was inserted, and this is now the expenditure of those to the various organizations that are receiving grants. Specifically, it's for 44 community-based nonprofit arts organizations. Of that, $303,430 is being awarded to them, and then $87,935 is going to be kept by the Arts Department for workshops, compensation for peer, peer evaluators, as well as some funds will be expended for the Summer Concert Series. Number 44 is approval of sub grant agreements for the 2022 Local History Program Grant with the New Jersey Historical Commission, not not to exceed $45,000. And again, earlier this evening, there was a budget insertion, $45,000, and this is now the expenditures to the various nonprofits. Specifically, it's 12 community groups, rewarding a total of $44,250, and the remaining $750 balance will, will be used for the grant administration fees. So happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Mr. Paul Vecchio.
I do not have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
With, this is for Tim Chris. With regard to the marketing and point-of-sale contract, is that, is that a proprietary software that the company owns? Or does the county still own, own that software via this contract?
Tim Chris, Director of Golf Course Operations, yes, it's proprietary. Basically, it's kind of like we're renting their services. Basically, it's kind of like we're renting their services.
So if we were to switch, Tim, we would have to obviously change the software and kind of start all over again, correct?
Exactly. We'd have to retrain everybody to a new system, which typically, that's why we try and make these when we bid these out, we try and make them as long-term as we can in terms of because it takes training of all the cashiers and managers. And it's quite comprehensive to teach everybody every time you change systems.
Right. Do we, how long have we been with this company?
So this will be our fourth year. We've been with them three years. So we went through the learning process. We did have a prior company, I believe, we had in for nine years. So then when we made that switch from USC Direct to Golf Now, you know, it's, I would say the learning curve is anywhere between three and six months to really get our people up and running and well-versed.
Right, okay. And this company is, is there any way to know they're solvent in terms of their ability to continue as a going concern so that you know, they
They're a large corporation. They're owned by, I believe it's NBC.
Okay. All right, thanks, Tim.
Sure.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. President, I just have a quick comment for Resolution number thirty-nine. I just wanted to say I was excited to see that the vendor for item thirty-nine is a veteran business owner. Is this the first time that we're doing the service? And who, just out of curiosity, cleaned the statues, if any, inside the buildings? Because I think you said this was specifically for outside statues only.
Sure. Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks, for you, Mr. President. This is the second time we've had this contract. The previous vendor did not want to re-up, so he went after bid. And regarding indoor statues, I'm not actually sure how many indoor statues there are throughout the county, but I just wanted to specify that these are outdoor statues. That's not to say indoor statues won't be cleaned under another contract or to say perhaps there are no indoor statues. I'm not really sure, but this is strictly for outdoor statues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take Resolutions Thirty-nine through forty-four as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions forty-five through forty-eight, which are from the Division of Housing and Community Development, and we'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Director Lombardi will handle these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item number forty-five, we are requesting approval for extending sub-recipient agreements for certain agencies that have previously received emergency solutions grant funds from the county. We would be looking to extend these contracts until August of two thousand twenty-two. And I think for the most part, all of these would be fully expended by that time. Item number forty-six, we are requesting that certain sub-recipient agreements for towns and agencies that have received Community Development Block Grant Funds be extended again through to August two thousand twenty-two. Most of these projects are town capital projects that are either close to being completed or should, will be completed before the end of August of two thousand twenty-two. Item number forty-seven, we are requesting that the Commissioners approve and accept the HUD award for the Home American Rescue Plan and Grant. This home grant is independent of our annual home allocation and is intended to support additional affordable housing and homelessness activities in response to the impact of the COVID pandemic. Again, this, at this time, we're requesting that the county accept the contract agreement, which would allow us, if necessary, to draw down up to about two hundred thousand dollars in administrative funds to develop a plan for the expenditure of these funds. And if I might add, we are, we are right now putting together a group of of folks from different aspects of the affordable housing world. And we'll be coming up with a comprehensive plan sometime in the future about how to expend these monies. Finally, item number forty-eight, we are requesting approval in order to process the paperwork required to update our Cares Management Assistance Program, which is funded by the Community Development Block Grant, CV two funds from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. And they recently indicated to us that the actual allocation is has been increased from two million up to two point one million. And therefore, we need to update our update our paperwork with the DCA.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Vecchio?
Yes, Mr. President. I do have a question on number forty-six, on that extension, the sub-recipient agreements. Is there any additional expense the county incurs and detriments to further extending these agreements?
Craig Lombardi, Department of Economic Development, I'm sorry, Division of Housing and Community Development. There is no extra expense. It just enables the applicant to receive the full award of their project. For example, we have some projects that actually have been completed, but we haven't finished the voucher process. So it's just a matter of getting some extra time to process their voucher. In other cases, because of the weather, other situations, the project may have been delayed somewhat and so it won't be finished until the coming year. But there will be no added expenses to the county. And it basically is just to try to get these projects done and to reimburse the various applicants the full amount of their awards.
That's good. Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
As far as the emergency solutions grants, those are the old emergency shelter grants, correct?
Right, right. They would include various, I'm sorry, Craig Lombardi, Division of Housing and Community Development. Yes, that program in total includes funds for street outreach, emergency shelter operations, homeless prevention, and rapid rehousing. Most of the agencies presented here, it was hard to spend homeless prevention money during the past year because of the moratorium on evictions, which impacts that program. But that money should be expended fairly quickly during this coming year.
I mean, there's a greater demand, you would say now?
Well, with the homeless prevention program, one of the criteria for, is that there's no in certain cases, one of the criteria is that there's no potential for eviction. And with the moratorium on evictions, obviously that removes that. So most of the cases here, like I say now, that should not be a problem now in that unfortunately, persons who are behind on their rent may have, may need the homeless prevention funds in order to retain their rental units.
Was this tied into any of the federal monies that we receive for rent stabilization, or I can't remember the exact wording on the grant, but the county did receive money from the federal government on the part of the COVID financing with regard to helping people with their rent. Is this, did this kind of dovetail?
This is, it's all related, but it is independent of that ESG CV funding. This is, this has been a program that's been around for a while. And it's and with there's various pools of money right now that are out there to help with rental assistance, including ESG.
And the criteria is different for both, or is it similar?
Similar, but different, there are some subtle differences between some of the programs. Now, again, you know, this ESG program, this is our, this is our base program. Again, it's been utilized by the county for several years. It's part of the annual plan that we submit to HUD every year. And again, it usually is diversified use every year for those four categories I mentioned before, street outreach, shelter operations, homeless prevention, and rapid rehousing.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take Resolutions forty-five through forty-eight as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please be reminded, we will conduct the public comment session for the non-agenda items at the end of the meeting for any other call-ins. Clerk can give you the call-in information.
If you're calling in, the number is eight-five-five-seven-five-six-seven-five-two-zero and use the password seven-eight-four-seven-three pound. After entering the password, listen for the prompt to press zero to be placed in the queue to speak during the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions forty-nine through fifty-one, which are from the Office of the Sheriff, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. We're going to tag team on this one, Mr. President. Mr. Coltray is going to handle forty-nine and fifty-one, and Detective Sergeant Lloyd is going to handle item fifty. Mr. Coltray?
Mister President Julius Coltray, Deputy Administrator, Purchasing Agent. Forty-nine is part of a state contract to Atlantic Tactical to provide EOTech Streamline brand of weapons, ammunition, and it's in compliance with the Board's two thousand and fifteen ordinance. And fifty-one is a contract award to ClearView Data Systems, the lowest responsive, responsible bidder to provide hardware and software maintenance and support for live scam equipment, and which is shared between the Corrections Department and the Sheriff's Office to provide updated information on various inmates. Any question in that amount is not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents. And number forty-nine is not to exceed three thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
Welby?
Detective Sergeant Welby Lloyd, Essex County Sheriff's Office. This is for Resolution number fifty, for an award for inside public sector for the purchase of a computer square InfoShare, InfoCAD system. It's under state contract, and the amount is not to exceed five hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. And it's for a new report management system for the County Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Paul Vecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
Yeah, this question might have been answered previously, so I apologize if it was from the administration. I did ask in this InfoShare contract and its implementation, whether or not the prosecutors investigators were going to have access to it. I asked that at the leadership meeting. It might have been answered, I just didn't see it.
Is that number?
There'll be an interconnection. It's fifty.
There will be.
There is an interconnection that connects to the prosecutor's office to share information.
Okay, thank you.
We did do all three, right?
Yes, Mr. President.
We did do fifty-one.
We did fifty-one.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, all right. Because you just talked about, that was fifty you were talking about, Frank?
Yes.
Mr. McInerney?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I got it right.
Yeah. Mr. President, our purchasing director did forty-nine and fifty-one first.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Vice President Palmares to take forty-nine through fifty-one as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions fifty-two through fifty-four, which are from the Office of the Prosecutor, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Sir, item fifty-two is a resolution approving participation in the VAVA Grant, which is Violence Against Women Act. This relates to the item that the Board just approved, number nineteen, inserting one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. Item fifty-three is a similar resolution granting participation, approving participation in the grant program. And this relates back to item number seventeen, where we submitted an amount of money, I think it was eleven thousand, what was it?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the insurance fraud program. And this is again, just approving the participation of the county in that program. And item fifty-four is a contract through the state contract system to purchase ammunition, nine-millimeter and twenty-two-twenty-three Remington ammunition in the amount of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and twenty-eight cents. And this vendor is in compliance with the Board's two thousand and fifteen ordinance. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Vecchio?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Vice President Palmares and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take fifty-two through fifty-four as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson. So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions fifty-five through ninety-seven, which are from the office of the Board of Commissioners, and resolutions creating various commissioner committees and proclamation resolutions. We will read them into the record at a later time. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
May I be included on number seventy-four?
I'd like to join seventy-four as well, and seventy-five, Commissioner Gill, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Also, number ninety-five, can we do that by acclamation? That's for the sister of Nicole.
Uh, yeah, we should do that via acclamation and...
Mr. President, can we do ninety-six and ninety-seven by acclamation as well?
Yes.
Sure. And I, I hope you guys will sign on to seventy-four as well.
Yes, to seventy-four as well.
Via acclamation.
I'd love to have everyone join me for ninety-six and ninety-seven.
Yes, I, I agree, Commissioner.
I'm in.
I'm in.
Thank you.
We're all in.
Great.
Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take resolutions fifty-five through ninety-seven as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any added starters?
Um, no, Mr. President. Uh, a point of note, I, I'm not sure if we, um, talked about resolution ninety-one being withdrawn by the administration, I mean, ninety-eight being withdrawn by the administration. We did, for the record?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Okay. No added starters, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to board committees. Commissioners, do we have any reports of board committees? Any legislative report? I'm sorry, Commissioner Cooper.
I'm sorry. Um, thank you for, I'm, I'm planning an, uh, upcoming, um, TNR meeting, just, uh, a request to Mr. Jackson. Can you circle back to us about the, um, oh my God, the place in Newark who was proposing to do some additional training services for us, please? Thank you.
Still, you surprised, absolutely.
It was another group that, that, uh, was gonna do the training, in our train, um,
ready for the...
Do we have any legislative reports? Any written communication? Any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, then, let's move to public comments or non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had an opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration, and they also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk.
You will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after all calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce callers so they could state their comment or question, and be reminded you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in, and at this time we accept only calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Chalo Malumbu, Public Information Officer, please begin our public session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chalo Malumbu, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We have multiple callers waiting to speak. The first caller is Barbara Russo. Uh, Ms. Russo, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Barbara Russo.
You may begin. You're on. You may begin. You have three minutes.
All right. My name is Barbara Russo. I am an employee of Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I am calling to share with our elected officials of the Commissioners Board the following issue. DFAB's management has been refusing adequate PPE for DFAB employees. It appears that our current administration has opted to complicate the process for ordering masks, Lysol, hand sanitizer, gloves, and wipes. Apparently, specific PPP such as Lysol was designated for higher-ranking employees. Further, we ask that you investigate the most recent procedures established by current DFAB administration and request a financial breakdown of all monies received from federal monies to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is, uh, Lisa Maddox Douglas. Uh, Ms. Douglas, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Lisa Maddox Douglas, Public Employee Supervisors Union, DFAB. America has a sordid history of inequality for African-Americans and women despite this passage of the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendments and decades-long of civil rights struggles by African-Americans. These discriminatory events gave rise to the Civil Rights Movement, which prompted Congress to enact laws eliminating discrimination. Many laws related to equal pay provided opportunities for job advancement based on merit, ability, and potential. As a result, agencies such as the New Jersey Civil Service Commission, formerly New Jersey Department of Personnel, was established to equalize opportunities and results. Throughout history, the deliberate marginalization and disenfranchisement of folks otherwise defined as not being America's majority has led to multiple movements thus seeking equal access to criminal justice, housing, politics, education, health, and levels of playing field within employment. As President of PISU, a labor union within DFAB, I proudly represent approximately one hundred and fifty dedicated supervisory and managerial employees. Unfortunately, we find ourselves constantly embattled with grievances related to health and safety issues and standards with respect to job opportunities and promotions. As such, we ask for your help, uh, Commissioner Board, just as the state of New Jersey has done to conduct the various, uh, statistical information for race and ethnic distribution throughout the county, gender distribution. We want to know what the minority percentage is in Essex County's workforce and women in Essex County workforce. In closing, we welcome the Commissioners Board's support as both unions, CWA Local Ten Eighty-One and PISU, fight to ensure the very nature of the civil rights laws of affording equal access to job opportunities are maintained and our very fundamental human rights to be protected from occupational health and safety hazards are enforced. I must share a quote from a very prophetic and well-known preacher, and it reads, "For when people get caught up with that which is right, and they are willing to sacrifice for it, there is no stopping point short of victory." Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lauren Forbes. Ms. Forbes, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Lauren Forbes. I work for the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits in Newark. Um, my concern is, sorry, I'm nervous. Excuse me. My concern is basically about, um, the distribution of, uh, of, uh, working at home and trying to provide... Can you come back to me?
Um, if you hang up, you have to call back.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for your patience. I'm gonna gather it together. I just was very nervous. Okay, so...
Okay, thank you.
My concern...
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Um, I was saying that my concern is that, you know, with schools being closed and everywhere being closed and, um, not being able to find childcare for our, our kids because of the, uh, COVID, COVID outbreaks and everything going on in, in the world. Um, I, I, I know that we have, uh, laptops and other equipment to, uh, help us to work at home, and I just don't understand, I wanna know why we aren't afforded those same, um, opportunities. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next caller is Belinda Sally. Ms. Sally, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Yes, my name is Belinda Sally. Good evening. I'm an employee of Essex County Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, as well as CWA Ten Eighty-One Local, Second Executive Vice President. We at DFAB consider making tele, telework options available when experiences surges of COVID-19. It is our belief that our agency should seriously consider these options when feasible. This would assist our coworkers who are at high risk of severe illnesses and possess underlying health condi, conditions, as well as myself who's battling breast cancer. This would also assist our peers who may have household members who are at high risk of severe illnesses as well. We believe DFAB administration's failure to devise a telework plan is negligent, especially since DFAB has reportedly received federal money to purchase computers, iPads, and cell, cellphone, and cellphones. Further, we ask that partial distribution of sequential retrieval of technology devices previously issued to DFAB employees. In closing, we, we question the whereabouts of the technological devices purchased from AT&amp;T with federal money. Thank you so much.
The next caller is Christina Kreis. I'm sorry if I mispronounce your last name. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
My name is Christina Kreis. I'm calling because I'm an employee of DFAB. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you. My name, um, I'm calling because we are, um, we're, we need considerations. We need considerations to work from home. We're protesting the recent outbreak and the conditions in which DFAB administration has forced our employees to work. The research of COVID-19 has adversely affected many of our peers. In fact, our agency has experienced multiple deaths as a result of this deadly disease, approximately three hundred and fifty-four positive tests. We ask you to review the practices that are being utilized within our agency, which may include proactive sanitation practices, disinfection practices for COVID-19, positive workstations, and temporary closures of our building to remediate this dire health and safety concerns. Sanitation suites often frequently used areas, but a priority should be additional for sanitation stations. It should be placed in all common areas, which include in hand sanitizer wipes. Also, we should have faucets that we don't have to use our hands, and we should have hand sanitizer regularly available. Me, fortunately, I'm actually healthy. My father suffers from, um, congestive heart failure, stage four, and I'm putting him at risk every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is, uh, I think it's Sharon or Seron Jones. Sorry if I mispronounce your name. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Sharon T. Jones, and I'm, am an employee of the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I am calling to share with our elected officials of the Commissioners Board the following issue. I am protesting management's unsafe edit to remove all microwaves from field offices, which will force employees to congregate and eat in the cafeteria area unmasked. We further believe this directive is a retaliation to a POSHA complaint initiated by union leadership regarding DFAB's failure to proactively exterminate rodents within various DFAB locations. Also, proper ventilation, appropriate air filtration systems, and spacing continues to be an ongoing challenge within our agency. Finally, DFAB administration has already done a poor job ensuring our employees are protected, and we believe mandating employees to congregate on elevators and cafeterias is life-threatening and unsafe. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next caller is Medina Ogunike. Medina, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Medina Ogunike. I'm an employee of the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I am protesting the recent outbreak and conditions in which DFAB administration has forced our employees to work. The resurgence of COVID-19 has adversely affected many of our peers. In fact, our agency has experienced multiple deaths as, as a result of this deadly disease and approximately three hundred and fifty-four positive tests. We ask that you review the practices being utilized within our agency, which may include proactive sanitation practices. Sanitation suites are frequently used. Areas should be a priority, and additional sanitation stations should be placed in all common areas, which may include hand sanitizer and wipes. Finally, we demand that DFAB administration immediately adhere to the OSHA, to the OSHA standards and require protection within the workplace. Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Weiner. Mr. Weiner, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Yes, good evening. I'm David Weiner, President of Local Ten Eighty-One CWA, representing the non-supervisor employees of DFAB. Out of considerable concerns over the continued risk of COVID to the members of our union, as well as PISU, the supervised union, our, our local arranged for a thorough inspection of indoor quality, including the heating ventilation HVAC system in the county-owned three-twenty-three-twenty-one University Avenue, which the county purchased in nineteen, uh, such like that, twenty-nineteen. Um, we had, we hired our own firm called Omega, and they were, we had to take the county to court, to perk. After five mediation sessions, we were allowed in. They spent three days in the facilities fully testing them. It was revealed, the most important thing is that the multiple heating cooling units were offline. They would go offline periodically. There's a hundred of them in the complex, most likely due to a sensor trip, creating dead zones throughout the building. This appears to be due to program problems with the building management system and needs to be promptly addressed. We noticed the county is completely replacing apparently the HVAC system, the hall of records. Our HVAC system, uh, we have the dead zones. Uh, additionally, we only have MERV eight filters. The standard filter today for COVID is minimal, MERV twenty, twenty to twenty-nine. We only have an eight, and they don't remove CO2, uh, and they don't deal effectively with COVID. We requested a meeting with the applicable county operatives in order to discuss the county's expeditious remediation of the issues cited within our report. We hired the company, we hired the lawyer. Instead, we received more questions from county council, uh, which we view respectfully as a means of trying to stall the county's response to us. We respectfully demand that the county reply to the HVAC company's, uh, findings and that they remediate the process. We've lost three hundred and fifty, we've had three hundred and fifty-four positives, and that was... we've had 354 positives, and that was like two weeks ago out of 700-something employees. We've had four deaths and another one two days ago. We don't know the cause of the one two days ago, but it was Samuel Parakeet's sister, who used to be with the DEDTE. He's lost two relatives now from the county. So please, do something about this HVAC system. We cannot live like this. We're dying this... Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Adrian... excuse me, Adrian Davis. Ms. Davis, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Adrian Davis, and I'm an employee of Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. We ask that DFAB considers making telework options available when experiencing surges of COVID-19. It is our belief that our agency should seriously consider these options when feasible. This would assist our coworkers who are at high risk of severe illness and possess this underlying health condition. This would also assist our peers who may have household members who are at a higher risk of severe illness as well. We believe DFAB administration's failure to devise a telework plan is negligent, especially since DFAB has reportedly received federal money to purchase computers, iPads, and cell phones. Further, we question that the partial distribution of subsequent retrieval of technological devices previously issued to DFAB's employees. In closing, we question the whereabouts of those technological devices purchased from AT&amp;T with federal money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next caller is Erwin Lawson. Mr. Lawson, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin. Mr. Lawson?
Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, we can. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin. Yes?
My name is Erwin Lawson, and I am an employee at Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I'm calling to share with the Commission about the removal of microwaves in our offices. This causes more congregation among our employees, movement in the hallway, and we have already experienced several outbreaks of COVID-19 spreading throughout the office. We further believe that this was done in retaliation because we complained about rodents being in the building. Also, proper ventilation, appropriate air filter systems, and spacing continues to be an ongoing challenge. Excuse me. Finally, DFAB administration has already done a poor job with ensuring that employees are protected, and we believe mandating employees to congregate in the elevators and the cafeterias is life-threatening and unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Colette Harris. Ms. Harris, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Colette Harris. I am an employee of the Division of Family and Assistance and Benefits. We ask that DFAB considers making telework options available when experiencing surges of COVID-19. It is our belief that our agency should seriously consider these options when feasible. This would assist our coworkers who are at higher risk of severe illness and possess underlying health conditions. It would also help facilitate us at DFAB delivering services to the community efficiently and seamlessly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Tamika Haynes. Ms. Haynes, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Yes, my name is Tamika Haynes, and I'm an employee at the Division of Family and Benefits. I'm calling in to protest the management's removal of all the microwaves and are now forcing us to go into the cafeteria. I am a person with a disability. I have an autoimmune disorder, and for a lot of our members that suffer from different type of immune compromising system, I think this is a major mistake for our director to try to force us along with others during the COVID surge into the cafeteria, putting ourselves more at risk. Just please consider this as a grave, grave error. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker. It is Tawana Lewis. Ms. Lewis, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Tawana Lewis, and I am an employee of the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I am calling to share with our elected officials of the Commissioners Board the following issue. I am protesting management's unsafe edict to remove all microwaves from field offices, which would force employees to congregate and eat in the cafeteria area unmasked. We were also forbidden to eat at our desk anymore, forcing us to congregate. We further believe the edict was in direct retaliation to a POSHA complaint initiated by union leadership regarding DFAB's failure to proactively exterminate rodents within various DFAB locations. Also, proper ventilation, appropriate air filtration systems, and spacing continues to be an ongoing challenge within our agency. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have one more speaker just came to the meeting, Mrs. Lorraine Gillette. Ms. Gillette, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Gillette, and I'm an employee of Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I'm calling to share with our elected officials of the Commissioners Board the following issue. DFAB's management has been refusing adequate PPE for DFAB employees. It appears that our current administration has opted to complicate the process for ordering masks, Lysol, hand sanitizer, gloves, and wipes. Apparently, specific PPE such as Lysol is designated for higher-ranking employees. Further, we ask that you investigate the most recent procedure established by current DFAB administration and request a financial breakdown of all monies received from federal monies to address these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do not have any more callers. Excuse me, I spoke too soon. We have one more caller, Mr. Looks like Cedric McCree. Mr. McCree, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Yes, my name is Cedric McGrady. I am an employee of DFAB, and one of my concerns, we are required to adhere to a mask protocol during times in the building. But it's interesting that we have customers who allow to enter the building void of any mask, and they are being serviced. And if we're actually concerned about safety, I believe that the same protocol that is applied to the DFAB workers should also be applied to the customers visiting that building. And that is one of my main concerns if we're seriously concerned about the spread of this very deadly... this very deadly disease. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGrady. Our next caller is Douglas Freeman. Mr. Freeman, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Douglas Freeman, calling on behalf of Weekday Park Sports Authority, 92 Thomas Carmichael Black. Good evening, Commissioners of Essex County. Just wanted to send praise and give thanks that on behalf of the community of Essex County residents and city of North West, one of the things I just want to bring you up to speed on what we were able to accomplish on behalf of the community was the recreational contract that was issued and we were able to obtain. During the COVID era, which we're still going through, we was having difficulties trying to relate with this different pandemic. So we reached out to UCC from Westside Park to see how we can network. One of the programs in which we put together is the NFL flag football. It's an NFL flag football play 60 program that's funded by the NFL and also through the community and different governmental agencies. What we was able to accomplish within one year is not only using the facilities of Essex County, we was able to come together where 30 children started out with, was able to go to the Jets regionals. Through the Jets regionals, two teams, which is the Westside team, 12U, and also the Weekday Park, 14U, were able to go on to the next stages, which is the NFL flag football Vegas trip that's going to be February the 7th... 2nd to February the 7th. We just found out just today that not only is it a national competition that we're going to be going to, we're going to be playing international teams, Mexico and also Canada. This is why we feel it's very important that we continue to support the community organizations to continue to have these recreational programs that's out here and to be able to continue to compound it together. Through this, we was able to come together with UCC, which is United Community Corporation, Weekday Park Sports Authority, and we formed the Essex County Parks League. Essex County Parks League is now developing to where we have a 12U team that went down to Eagles Regional, and they also too are going to Vegas this and next following month. And one of the things, because the Jets were so...
Thirty seconds.
Happy about... I'm wrapping up. The Jets were so happy about seeing us come together with community organizations and government that they have sponsored the hotels for the children at the Mandalay Bay. We'll have a good time. I also want to thank our president for being behind us, Wayne Richardson, because with his support, we've been able to move it forth along with County Executive Joe D. and Dan Sobel. Thank you. I just want to bring you up to speed, and there'll be a full report after we're done, and then we'll come back. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Thank you for that update. I look forward to coming back with the national championship, with the Super Bowl. Bring it home, brother. We're rooting for you. That conclude the speakers?
No, it does not, Mr. President. We have a couple more waiting to speak. The next speaker is Selena Morris. Ms. Morris, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Selena Morris. I'm an employee of Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I was calling to protest a lack of telework or work-from-home option. This pandemic has been going on for almost two years, and it's disheartening to know that we don't have that option. We are forced to work in conditions where we're so close to each other in proximity of working with each other that I can turn around and just touch my coworker that sits right behind me. I think this is very dangerous, and being that the numbers that we have in our agency, it would be a great option if they can offer telework or work from home. And not even just because of the pandemic, but even for inclement weather. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Our next speaker is Josette Littlejohn. Ms. Littlejohn, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Josette Littlejohn, and I'm an employee of Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. We ask that DFAB considers making telework options available when experiencing surges. Okay, hold on, let me... Okay, can you hear me now?
She probably has the device on.
Ms. Littlejohn, please, please turn off any devices near you that have the meeting plan. You cannot listen to the meeting until it's the same talk. All right.
I did. Okay. Good evening. My name is Josette Littlejohn. I'm an employee of Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. We ask that DFAB considers making telework options available when experiencing surges of COVID-19. It is our belief that our agency should seriously consider these options when feasible. This would assist our coworkers who are at high risk of severe illnesses and possess underlying health conditions. This will also assist our peers who may have a household member who are at higher risk of severe illness and wellness. I also have seniors at home that in jeopardy of every time I go in and come out, I come home and infect them. Also, in the offices of 320 and 321 University Avenue of Newark, no windows open. There's no ventilation whatsoever, only the air vents, and the air is not clean at all. Looking at the vents, it's severely dirty, and we're living in horrible deplorable conditions. They're starting to let us eat in the cafeteria. Now the cafeteria is filthy, the floor is dirty. I don't even go up there anymore. The tables are not clean, and we're looking at the cleaning people go clean. They're using one towel to clean everyone's desk. And we believe DFAB administration's failure to devise a telework plan is negligent, especially since DFAB has reportedly received federal money to purchase computers and iPads and cell phones. Further, we question the partial distribution and subsequent retrieval of technological devices previously issued in DFAB employees. In closing, we question the whereabouts of the technological devices purchased from AT&amp;T with federal money. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anthony Austin. Mr. Austin, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Thank you very much. My name is Anthony Austin. I am an employee for DFAB. Earlier, President, our President, I am also a member of CWA 1081. He mentioned that there were four deaths in regards to this COVID pandemic. It would have been five. I was one of the people who actually contracted COVID-19. I was in the hospital for a while. I actually flatlined. I actually, thank God, came back to life. And every day I come into the saucers, and I'm a little bit terrified, I'm a little bit scared, every single day. Difficult for me to admit that and just say it, but I just wanted to get my voice clear and get things heard that just the general inaction by administration has caused divide amongst all the employees in the office. I know that we've already discussed the issues regarding the microwave because we need those things to keep ourselves separate. We open up a cafeteria where you cannot sit right next to each other. You have to be six feet apart. There's not enough space for the hundreds of employees that we have inside of that building. We worry about the air because of the unclean vents. There's a lot of concerns that we've already listed and that people have already stated. The most important thing is that I want you to just hear us out and understand that this pandemic that is ravaging the country, that is ravaging our building. Like I said, we've had over 300 cases over this span of time. There have been constant emails every single day that someone else is testing positive, and it's tiring, and it's taxing, and it takes a lot for us to do our job and to assist the people and the citizens of Essex County. We do all we can. We strive and done excellent work throughout the pandemic, and we just wish and ask for just a little bit of understanding, a little bit of care, to just look into the concerns that we have to help us out the best of our abilities, because the better we do, the better the citizens of Essex County do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next caller is Darnell Thompson. Mr. Thompson, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Darnell Thompson, Division of Family Assistance and Benefits employee. I'm just asking that you Commissioners, each and every one of you, sit back, review this. I am aware that it's being recorded, and hear the concerns of DFAB. There are valuable and valid concerns from the employees. Please hear us, consider, put yourselves in our position. How would you yourself appreciate being handled in such a manner with such a pandemic? That's all I ask. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. The next speaker is Damicia Turner. Ms. Turner, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. The next speaker is Demisha Turner. Ms. Turner, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Demisha Turner and I'm an employee of the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I am protesting the recent outbreak in conditions in which DFAB administration has forced our employees to work. The resurgence of covid nineteen has adversely affected many of our peers. In fact, our agency has experienced multiple deaths as a result of this deadly disease and approximately three hundred and fifty-four positive tests. We ask that you review the practices being utilized within our agency, which may include proactive sanitation practices, which I doubt is very scarce because I myself, um, observed our own bathroom, employee bathroom, not being properly sanitized nor cleaned for more than a week, at excess of two. Disinfection, excuse me, disinfection practices for covid nineteen positive workplaces and temporary closure of our buildings to remediate desired health and safety concerns. Sanitation suites are frequently used areas should be a priority, mopping, cleaning, just basic sanitation. An additional sanitation station should be placed in all common areas, which may include hand sanitizer and wipes. Finally, we demand that DFAB administration immediately adhere to the OSHA standards and required protections within the workplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker is Tanya Robinson. Ms. Robinson, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Tanya Rob- excuse me, Tanya Robinson.
You may begin, Ms. Robinson.
Okay. So, good evening. So, the county of Essex has a motto, putting Essex first, which is what we as DFAB employees do all day, every day. We work really hard to put our customers first and, and deal with the issues and concerns that they have. We're just asking you as freeholders to help and support and put us first. We have families that we go home to and we don't want to take anything home to them. It is daunting to get alerts five, six, seven a day um, on holiday weekends, at night, all hours. It's stressful and daunting. We are wearing our own PPE. It was, there was a meeting recently where our unions were told that K N nine five masks were the better mask and yet you still give us the, the paper ones. You're not giving them to us. We have to buy our own. You're not even giving us stipends or paying partial. It, it makes us concerned. The, the rules and the regulations and the, and the lack of help and support that we, we are feeling has us scared, nervous, concerned because at the end of the day, the one thing we all want to do is go home to our family safely and not take anything back and not get sick ourselves. A lot of us have responsibilities that we have to take care of and God forbid, we get covid and along with our other issues, we, we, we die, we perish. Who takes up that slack for us? So, we would like you to help us. Put Essex first, put us first and help us support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. President, I have received some email comments and I will read them at this time. Uh, the first one is from Daria Rotondo, uh, no address given. Uh, dear, good evening. My name is Dario Rotondo. I'm an employee of Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I'm writing to share with our elected officials of the commissioner board the following issue. I am protesting management's unsafe edict to remove all microwaves from the field offices, which would force employees to congregate and eat in the cafeteria area en masse. We further believe the edict was in direct retaliation to POCIA um, complaint, com- complaint initiated by the union leadership regarding DFAB's failure to proactively exterminate rodents within various DFAB locations. Also, proper ventil- ventilation, appropriate air filtration systems and spacing continues to be an ongoing challenge within our agency. Finally, DFAB administration has already done a poor job ensuring our employees that are protected and we believe mandating employees to congregate in ca- in a cafeteria is unsafe. Sincerely, Dari- Daria Rotondo. Uh, next is Vicky Saunders of East Orange. Uh, good evening. My name is Vicky L. Saunders. I'm an employee of the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. We ask uh, D- that DFAB consider making telework options available when experienced surges of covid nineteen. It is our belief that our agency should seriously consider these options when feasible. This would assist our coworkers who are at a higher risk of severe illnesses and possess underlying health conditions. This would also assist our peers who may have had health, all members who are at higher risk of severe illness as well. We believe DFAB administration's failure to devise a telenetwork plan is negligent, especially since DFAB has reportedly received federal monies to purchase computers, iPads and cellphones. Further, we question the partial distribution and subsequent uh, retrieval of technical devices previously issued to DFAB employees. In closing, we question the whereabouts of those devices purchased from AT&amp;T with federal money. Next, a similar email requesting that DFAB considered uh, telework options and requiring about devices purchased from AT&amp;T was submitted by Jonah Lux of West Orange, New Jersey. Okay, um. There, there were multiple comments submitted via email for non-agenda items and these are additional items. And uh, the next one was from Deepa Churede, uh, no address given. Uh, good evening. My name is Deepa Churede. I'm an employee of the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I'm calling to share with our elected officials and commissioners board the following issues. DFAB management has been refusing adequate PPE for DFAB employees. It appears that our current administration has opted to complicate the process for ordering masks, Lysol, hand sanitizer, gloves and wipes, apparently. Specific PPE such as Lysol is designated for higher rank and employees. Further, we ask that you investigate the most recent procedure established by our current DFAB administration and request a financial breakdown of all monies received from federal monies to address these issues. Microwaves, uh, uh, pious and forced congregation. I'm protesting the management's unsafe edict to remove all microwaves from field offices, which would force employees to congregate, eat in the cafeteria area en masse. We further believe the edict was in direct retaliation to POCIA complaints initiated by the union leadership regarding DFAB failures to proactively exterminate rod- rodents within various DFAB locations. Also, proper ventilation and appropriate air filtration systems and spacing continues to be an ongoing challenge within our agency. Finally, DFAB administration has already done a poor job in ensuring our employees are protected and we, we believe um, the employees to congregate on elevators and cafeterias, life threatening and unsafe. Um, the three minutes are up for this um, uh, email and the rest will be uh, entered into the record uh, at a later time. And uh, the following um, uh, um, comments or similar comments were also submitted by Vicky Saunders, Joanna Looks, Christina Cryes, Patricia Hill, Hamish Shah, Adrian Davis, uh, Chin Wee Drew, Duru, uh, Yvette, um, Mehta, Natalie Harper, Josette Littlejohn, Clarabelle, Kayzada, uh, Sherrell Parker, Sharon Jones, uh, Tyanna Thomas and Dar- Daria Rotondondo and David Weiner. And that completes uh, the emails received for public comment for non-agenda items, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And uh, as is our process, uh, your questions will be answered in writing. So make sure they get to the proper uh, people in the administration who can answer those questions. But I do have one question. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson still around?
Uh, Mr. President, hi. This is Matthew Dooley, Officer County Administrator. He just stepped out. Back in a minute.
Okay, so maybe you could answer or someone on here can answer this question for me. Uh, does, is there any, oh, Courtney is there as well. Is anyone uh, in DFAB able to allow employees to work uh, from home? Do they have that authority or is that an administrative executive function? Because they, they, I keep hearing that they, you know, DFAB should allow folks to work from home or work tele- Do, does a director or whomever in DFAB have that ability or is that an administration function?
Um.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, uh, Robert Jackson, County Administrator. The county executive has um, uh, basically given an edict that we will all be working uh, at work. Um, that the work from home option is not uh, one that's available to uh, any of the, the employees under his purview. Um, and um, we, that, that's just basically the, the policy of the county executive uh, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for answering that question. I, I thought that to be the truth, that it's not anyone in DFAB who can determine who can work from home. It's, it's the administration, it's the county executive.
That, that is correct.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any other comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. President, I, I do have a, a request.
Commissioner, cool.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Jackson, um, can you in the future, please, do all the resolutions related to sub-granties like you did resolutions forty-five and forty-six?
I'm happy to comply, comply. Um, Commissioner, I just wanna make sure what, what you mean when you say the way we did it.
When you look at items forty-five and forty-six, you have a listing of the sub-granties with the amount and the towns that they're from. And um, other ones, it wasn't laid out as clearly and as nicely the way that you did in forty-five and forty-six. So I'm asking, can you um, do them all that same way and it'd be a little bit easier um, to follow?
Uh, through you, Mr. President. I, I absolutely, good, good suggestion. We will do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got one other question, uh, uh, Mr. Jackson. The um, disparity study. Do you know where we are with that?
We, uh, Mr. President, we are meeting uh, weekly on that with the, with the vendor coming along nicely. Um, I think we're on schedule. We may slip, um, we actually, we may slip forty-five, sixty days on that, uh, only because of some of the difficulty, um, getting some information and they're actually doing a very, I, I think, very thorough job on some of the basic data that we have going through it. Um, but making great progress and I think we'll have something for the board uh, uh, by the end, certainly by the end of the year um, to report, I think, a couple months earlier than that. But it's, it's coming along uh, very, very nicely. Uh, I would again, and give kudos, kudos to Mr. Walker. Just gonna say kudos to Tim Walker, um, and his team and the, the, the group, the NGT group who are working on it, uh, doing a, a, I think, a really good job.
So, my last question, is there someone from the commissioner board uh, who, who's on those meetings? Anyone who's representing the board of commissioners involved in any of those meetings that you're having?
Uh, no, sir. Um, at, at the moment, it's just uh, administration uh, uh, folks. Um, but we can, um, if you, if you wish, we can give you um, an update. If there's a, a, a subcommittee, uh, Mr. President or something, we can schedule something like that if that's helpful. Um, just kinda give your progress, report or, or written progress or whatever you prefer, Mr. President, we'll, we'll be happy to comply.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, let's set something up so we can get updates in a timely fashion. Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. President.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, uh, this is, this is uh, Robert Jackson, uh, County Administrator. If, if we do have our people, uh, they are there because the county executive warned them they're at work. Uh, is there any way we can make sure that they have the tools to be safe? You know, the, the, uh, N ninety-five mask, the, and the things that it takes for them to be safe, at least being at work? Um, through you, Mr. President, uh, Robert Jackson, County Administrator. Um, I think we would take issue with some of the um, statements that were made with respect to what levels of safety and, and, and materials that are provided. I think that one thing that we don't have, of many things we have shortages of in the county is PPE. Um, and I think that we have, I think that Director Richardson has done, um, I believe, a very, very good job with making uh, material and so with available. Um, if, uh, and, and so I would just say that we, we do not hold the, the position uh, that some have said tonight, that, you know, that, that, that they're essentially like working if you live, like working, you know. I, I, we just would not agree with some of the positions that have been made. Um, we, we, we heard tonight, some of the, the comments that were made, we're always looking to get better. Um, and, you know, we'll commit to the board to continue to look at that. I will, we'll ask Director Richardson to, along with Maya Bordeaux, our health officer, to take a look again at it. Um, but I can tell you, you know, for a fact that the committee, that the Director Richardson and, and, and um, our health officer Maya Bordeaux and certainly the county executive are committed to have all of our employees work in the safest possible environment. If we're falling short in a couple of things, we're happy to look at it and we'll certainly commit to the board of commissioners to uh, to do that and uh, and give you uh, assurances that, that that's on the right track.
And, and what about the thing about the microwaves? How were these situated? Did they have it in floors or different part, departments in, up there or was it like a, a open area where it was just microwaves? You know, because, you know, I can understand them not wanting to be in that crowd like that. Although I know our county employees have been being tested on a regular basis, you know, or have had their vaccines and things of that nature. But you know, this covid nineteen is kinda spooky with a lot of people, especially those that have to go home to their kids and their parents and aunts who are, have different ailments and things of that nature. So, I, I, I would like to feel safe that they're being safeguarded the right way because they are doing the work for us here at the county.
Uh, through you, Mr. President. And again, I just wanna reiterate that um, the county executive and, and, and all of us uh, on this call and all of our uh, management are committed to have the safest possible environment for all of our employees. So, we, we don't wanna, we would not initiate a policy that we think is gonna put our uh, employees in danger. Um, the, the microwaves are, are, I would almost describe it as different stations um, throughout that, the area where the cafeteria is. Their work, there were previously uh, microwaves spread out on some, in the actual work areas. However, um, with the, with the edict now to not be eating at desk and so forth, the, the notion was, well, let's get everybody um, not congregated, but certainly uh, the, the microwave spread out in more um, more separate stations, but in the same uh, floor area. So it's not like you have twenty micro- microwaves in one room and everybody's, it's not like that. There are sort of four, five or six in certain areas that, that folks can use and then go and eat in the cafeteria. One of the, one of the problems we have, one of the issues we have is, you know, where we say, well, we have a concern about um, rodents or whatever, but yet we want, we, at the same time, we wanna be able to um, you know, have food and so forth throughout the building. And so it's kind of like you can't have your, you know, you can't have your, you can't be kicking either two. It's kind of like you have to, we have to take some measures if we're trying to control one, one complaint. Um, there's some measures that we can take to try to do that. Um, that may come cause an inconvenience on the other side. But um, again, all issues that, um, you know, i- if everybody's, you know, eating on every, everywhere, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a problem, right? So, what we said, well, let's try to control that. And then um, if we do that, then maybe we can revisit some other things. But in the moment, uh, we're trying to control one particular issue. Uh, I would say that we will, again, as I, as I said previously, um, with, with Director Richardson and with the, with our health officer, we'll look at a number of things. Um, but we are, uh, continue to be committed to putting everybody Um but we are uh continue to be committed to putting everybody um, putting our employees first, um but also recognizing that um uh uh, you know, we're not perfect and we'll we'll keep, we'll keep working. But I would just again say, um we would not agree with some of the, some of the statements that were made here tonight.
Okay. Good, thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners. Commissioner Cooper, you're muted if you're speaking.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Can I ask Mr. Jackson a a question or two?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Jackson, related to the PPE, is it distributed in a central location or is it given to the department and then that department director who supervises or however they deem distributes it to the rest of the staff?
Uh and I I don't want to speak directly for Director Richardson, but I believe the supervisors are giving or have the access to the supply of the PPE. I don't, I'm, I think that's the way it goes. I I will, I will find that information, uh Commissioner, and get back to on that specifically. But I believe it's done through the, um the requests are made through the supervisors, but I will um ask that question directly of uh of uh Director Richardson and get and get back to you tomorrow.
And and I'm curious to know, is it that is distributed to people or people have to come to make the request? And did you say earlier that we typically offered N ninety-five masks, but we we are experiencing some shortages and that's why we don't have any at the time?
No, I I don't believe I addressed uh N ninety-five mask at all. And I would also, again, I I would defer to 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 our Health Officer, but I think the the efficacy of one versus the other, you know, I I couldn't really speak, I really can't speak to that, but um I I don't believe it's it's a shortage. Um I believe it's just what's appropriate. Again, I don't want to speak for the Health Officer, but that that those are two issues that I will uh have answers for you for tomorrow.
Please.
It's not.
And 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 do we have, along that same line, I know you talked about the microwaves. Are the mic- the microwaves are there? Um do we have sanitation stations throughout the department? Is that department a densely populated department?
Well, I I guess, you know, every everything is relative, but I I was there um yesterday and and and, yeah, I think it was yesterday. And the um, you know, the cafeteria, the seating is, some people eating there and they were fairly, they were spread out. Um there are sanitation stations throughout the um the building. There are people who, you know, when I was in the lunch area, for example, there was, there was someone there who was cleaning the microwaves as as people were were using them. Um so, yeah, there are, there are, there are um sanitation methodologies in place. Um the microwaves are, you know, you might have five or six microwaves in one area and then five or six microwaves in another area and then, you know, that kind of thing. But it's not what was, which was basically in some of the the specific individual work areas on the various floors, there were microwaves. Those are no longer um in place and they were put more uh like in groups instead of individual
Okay.
uh microwaves.
I I think the other, uh, I think one of the troubling things is, what's the policy? Because that department dealt with customers that come in from the outside. Are the customers required to equally wear masks is is a question that I have as well.
Um I, again, my experience.
I know you have to get back to me, but that's one of the questions, like, yeah, what's the policy?
I will get, we'll get back to you. And maybe, maybe Courtney knows.
If if I could just, I could uh possibly try to respond through you, Mr. President, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. Masks are required in all county buildings, whether whether you are an employee or a member of the public. So that would be applicable to three twenty-three, twenty-one University Avenue, which is a county operated facility. So that that is, has always been since March of twenty twenty, our our policy with regard to all of our facilities, indoor facilities, that has never changed.
No exceptions.
No exception. We do.
And there's security at that building, right? When people come in?
There is security at both of those buildings. Uh we do have, just speaking of exceptions, we do have some employees with medical conditions um that it that involve their inability to wear masks, but as for the members of the public, they are required to wear masks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing not, motion to adjourn.
No more.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
All right, so move. Have a good night. Be safe. It's not over. Wear your mask. Get vaccinated. Be careful out there.
Take care, everyone.
Have a good night.
Bye, everyone.